I think it was something that you said was that we can aim and can reach these goals. We can get 80% of our students in three years proficient in literacy numeracy assessments. We can, we can do that. And this is a way to do that. We can get 75% of our students proficient on science and social studies outcomes. We can do that. Our, our teachers have those skills, our kids are ready, and our parents are ready. We can get 90% of our students proficient in those unified art skills. We can get 90% of students needing those development indicators that I was just talking about. We can do all these things. And if we don't get there in three years, that's okay too. Because that, if we were moving in the right direction and we are continuously looking at what we're doing and making sure that we are developing ourselves as educators, so kids get the best quality outcome, we'll get there. So that's the whole vision I have for doing this. It takes a lot of work. The teachers are going, are already working so hard and thinking about this and have been huge resources for me. As I start to go through this, the kids are, our K4 kids are so excited about learning. It's amazing. And I only say this, I'm sure there's five, eight kids that are too, but I say this because I'm in their classrooms. They're so excited to be at school. Our teachers care so much. They're spending so much time this year focusing on quality math instruction with Rob, Kasey, after the work they're doing. They are passionate about our learners. And our families are passionate about their kids. And so I know that we can collectively get there and I hope you're as excited about this as I am. That's it. Oh, I did it! Do you have any questions?
No, just thank you for all the positive energy and, uh, forward thinking.
I wonder if you can record this again.
Absolutely.
And then put it on our website, Rob? Our YouTube website.
Without a doubt. I want to put her PowerPoint on there as well.
Yes, because this is tremendous. And I feel, I just wish almost we could record the kids again. It just breaks my heart. Can you do that?
I'll record it again.
Okay.
Absolutely!
Put it on our YouTube.
Absolutely!
Oh, that'd be wonderful. That'd be wonderful.
And we're offering like pledge of allegiance, like opportunities for kids to sign up and read the pledge anyway, or, uh, lead the pledge anyway, um, during the morning announcements, so we'll get them in.
You never know, Jay might even build an overlap lip sync though.
We can do it!
Cause we got video.
We can do it!
It's sort of like trying to get them in.
We'll do it. We'll do it. Um, the other thing I wanted to share too is my plan as part of this is doing like a, a community info night once I kind of get a little bit farther along and solidify some of the other plans. What you don't see on here, these are nice visuals, is you see my manic spreadsheets. They're color-coded spreadsheets about that, you've seen them. Uh, no, I haven't put the color-coded spreadsheet. There is some information, but it's very early information. I don't want to, I'm trying to kind of find the balance between sharing this project with families without giving them information that's just going to change again. So I'm trying to, um, so I've given like information on standards and how we hit them by trimester, um, right now. Um, part of this will be, and again, the teachers have all heard this from me, looking at report cards, maybe it's like literally everything. It might take five years, originally I almost said five years, but I'm looking to shoot for three. And if we don't get three, we'll, we'll get there. We're gonna get there. Give me that.
The thing that I talked to Natalie and Jeff about was I said, I think what we just need to see is ongoing progress, right? I mean, for years now, it's been requested and sight has remained blank.
Right.
Um, so like I said to them, I said, anything, starting to get on there. And that's what she did almost immediately. She went on and threw some stuff on saying, here's a great starting point for people to be able to see. So that's already there. Um, and then, you know, as time goes by, they'll be able to add more. Like you said, have those information nights. I, I'm just excited with her level of energy around this and her level of knowledge. Uh, Natalie is taking this and running, and this is, this is huge. Because you really need that. You need that person that really wants to spearhead it in order for it to take shape. Um, and I just don't have any more capacity to take that, so.
We're just so thankful for you. We're thankful for you. You are, you're phenomenal. Really a gift.
I love this school and I love these kids.
Well, thank you so very much.
Thank you guys.
I have a question that may be an encouraged motion, I don't know.
That's okay. Um, I'm ready for it.
I'm just thinking that, uh, report card season and conferences are coming up. Is there any value in adding some sort of handout when those go home or rekindling mother parent teacher conferences? They like, hey, this is the exciting, you know, just one of your slides, not the whole presentation.
I could, I think maybe I could put something like that in the newsletter. My only fear is I want the conference to vote, to still remain the focus between the teacher and the family. But maybe what I can do is...
Or maybe it's at the end, I don't know if it's like a teaser.
Maybe that day, because it's, it's the 31st, right? So what I could do is I could just say, I could put it in my newsletter, I could email out and say, I'm gonna be here and I'm here to, I can talk about this and I'll just put myself out in the hallway somewhere and then people can ask if they want to ask. So it's real, so I'm still there, but I also want to respect that people's time. I want the focus of the teachers.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
Yep.
I also want to thank you, um, Rob sent us a copy of the insert that you go, that we suggested that you do a Dean's Quarter or something for the newsletter for the town. And we read that and I thought it was really great.
Thanks!
Did you guys all read it?
Shout out to Jess Clark, who was huge in helping me do that, because she's done it before.
It was perfect. It was letting the community know all the things we talked about at the forum. So we took a lot of the feedback and Natalie took care of it. Thank you again.
I do too! Thank you guys! Thank you so much! I'm gonna hang.
Can I just seek one piece of clarification?
Sure.
Do you want the pledge every meeting or do you want it once a month?
Because I have plenty of kids who are interested if you want it.
Well, we also talked about switching up a little and, and I just wanted to know what I'm looking, what you're looking for.
Well, we have, I think, November, all the meetings is in Cooper House. So we wouldn't have to probably, we could do another for October, no? And then November will do one and then December will do one, because I think we'll only have one meeting each month.
I think if they want to come to the meeting and make the pledge, I think it's great.
That's great. All right. And hopefully our audio will work next week. Okay. All right, we got that. Superintendent's report, the manifest. How's that going? Uh, I didn't see the issue. It's good? Oh, good. Very, very good. All right, so we have action items.
Yeah, the resignation new hires, uh, nothing official tonight. There was possibilities, but nothing to present, so we're just getting over that item. Uh, water lean-to reimbursement, uh, that was in, uh, the packet. Um, you can see that the total cost was $3,727.19 and I will point out that that was less than rebuilding some dugouts a while ago, so you saved a lot of money having it in in-house projects, so.
Thank you. There you go. Um, do you need, are you hoping this money taken out?
I need there to be an official motion from the board to allow me to transfer that much money from our capital improvement fund back into the budget. That's the only way I can make that process happen.
Okay.
I'm gonna make that motion. I just want to open up, because I think I saw the balances for our accounts in here, did I?
Um, they're in there, yep. The most recent statements are in there.
Just be aware of what it is. So our I and B account currently has, um, is that $255,000, $255,018.23?
I was afraid to, um, say it quickly, but it looks like it's saying the closing balance is $412,081.5.
That's a person took this ago.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Sorry, sorry.
The other one's $255,000.
Yeah, 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 $255,001.82.
Okay, so I move we authorize the transfer of, um, $3,727.19 from our school I and B account for the purpose of, uh, paying for this water lead to project cost.
Okay, do we have a second? Discussion? Okay, and just to note that we used our own in-house labor for this. We had our facility manager and our superintendent, who is now, uh...
Maintenance guy. So maintenance is superintendent.
Oh, it was maintenance.
Remember, I'm the facilities manager on paper.
Oh, oh.
She just said me twice. Yes, I, I felt like I was two people that week, but I was only one. So Greg Sullivan, Greg Sullivan, definitely huge kudos, couldn't have done it without him.
Yes, okay.
That's definitely a credit.
Alrighty, so the man of many talents. Okay. All right. Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yep. Kyle? And Debbie, yes.
All right, so next. Let's see here, eye screening consent form. So, um, we, our, our nurse reached out and has a proposal sent to her by the Lions Club to do annual screening. And they provided us with a consent form to screen for vision disorder. They sent us a what to expect and why vision screening is important for young children. And we're just looking for the board to see if there's any concerns with this happening.
We just want, because it's an outside agency, like we had the person came in or the people that came in to do the heart screening, um, last time, we just wanted to make sure that the board approved an outside agency coming in.
Is this, is this a, would parents opt in or opt out of this? Cause the...
They have to sign this in order for it to happen, so that's really an opt-in.
Okay, cause the, the thing on here says by placing an X in the box, I am opting out of vision screening for my child.
Yep.
But as, as long as it's a permission slip.
If this isn't filled out, they can't do it.
Okay.
And they're sending their own people in to do this, right?
They are. This is all handled by them.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion to, if people are okay with this, to allow this agency to come in and offer vision screening for all of our kids for free?
Yep. I move we authorize, um, this agency, Lions Kidsite USA, to come in and perform this eye screening for our students, for the families that choose to do it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? It's really a, a great opportunity, I mean, because they're using not just an eye chart, they're just a little bit more depth.
And just to be clear, this will be, it has to be a signed consent form in order for them to get the screening.
Okay? Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle? Debbie, yes.
All right. Uh, let's see here, next is, nope, sorry, subpay, subpay. So, um, we did discuss, um, the possibility of, uh, reviewing subpay and, uh, secure hands.
Okay, so we did talk about, um, we're, we're in a crisis situation here where we don't have enough subs to cover for teachers when they're out. So, um, we're looking at, um, our pay and how competitive it is to find a few people who are willing to sub. Um, and we felt that for this year, that we would try to increase the subpay uh, by a significant amount to see if we can get more people who are willing to come and sub for us. So our current rate is $108. And we were talking about possibly raising the, the rate, um, to $140 a day, which is equivalent to $20 an hour for the remainder of this year, until then we, um, revisit the whole situation. So I don't know if anybody wants to make that motion or...
I move that we authorize the increase of our substitute pay daily rate to $140 from $108 for the remainder of this school year.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion? Um, and we also looked at our budget for the, um, subpay that we have budgeted. We do have a couple of long-term subs. We took that into consideration. Uh, because we haven't been able to find subs, we do have some money there. So, uh, we feel that this will be covered in our regular budget, that we will muck over budget on that line. And hopefully we'll be able to attract more people to, to sub. Right? Yes. Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
It's hard to push that tomorrow. Everybody in the room that's here. All right, next, um, we're into informational items, ongoing completed board meeting task list. I think I got everything last month. Um, uh, you know, we got, I believe we got it all checked off, so you can see that list there. Any questions? Okay, September enrollment numbers are included, so this is really comparing the June to September. Uh, we do see that we lost, um, 12 students in the elementary level, but it's also important to recognize that the, um, this is including any sort of transitions to other high schools, things like that that occurred. So we're, once again, we're, we're down 12 from where we were in June in the elementary. We're down two in preschool and we're down 12 at the high school, which means we're down a total of 26 students from where we were at in June. Questions?
So right now, we, between the high school and the elementary, or the elementary, middle school, we have 530 students. That is very low.
The, the size of the K-class covenant is much significant, much, much more small than, what, it's down 12 kids? What was there last year?
Yep.
And it could, we always should keep in mind, things can change, um, but you see that change throughout. All right. Uh, the next few pages are, um, oh, actually, sorry, the next thing on here is actually not the next page. So at the time of the memo, the DOE 25 had not been submitted, had not been finalized yet. It is finalized. I have provided the board with a handout copy of the DOE and MS-25s. Um, so you've had those. The CPA, Greg, uh, is interested in seeing if we can't get the signature forms done tonight for both of those so that we can get this process finalized. Um, we did get ours done prior to the town being able to complete that process, so we are definitely not holding anybody up this year, which is good news. We didn't last year either, so we've got a little bit of a, a run going here, so.
I did, um, I don't know if anybody else looked through it. I thought it looked pretty good. I didn't see anything glaring. I don't know if anybody else has a question about it, if we're ready to sign. If you want more time, you could, you know, you can come to this and you can sign. It's up to you.
You can come by and sign on Friday.
Yes, okay. Okay, so, um, the first thing I have to do is certify it under the pains and penalties of perjury to the best of my knowledge and believe that all the information contained in this document is true, accurate, and complete. And I have to sign that line and I believe it's all true and accurate and complete.
Cause we trust Greg.
And, well, I looked at the number, nothing seems glaring at all, seems, um, like it, it lined up.
And he worked so hard on that. It takes him a couple of months to get that done, so. It's a big project.
And this is what has been late in the past and we're not in that situation.
So the last time was December of '22. Remember, we didn't get it done until the Christmas Eve? And ever since then, the last three years, we've been pretty much on time. Technically on time is August 30th. Everybody applies for a 30-day extension that I know of and we got it done within our 30-day extension. It's just, nobody can get this done in August because you're just getting your numbers back. We're still getting bills and stuff in late July and beginning of Au- August, so. Anyway, we did get it done within our 30-day extension, so we are on time as far as the state is concerned.
So again, if you want to, um, take more time, I, I was here early, so I was able to go through it. So if you want more time, you can just come to this and you decide, it's up to you.
But please, please, please by Friday.
Yeah.
Cause I know we want to get this uploaded.
Right. All right, next?
Yes, so I did, uh, it turns out my, my two documents don't align with each other. So we did skip over the, um, the account statements. The one I wanted to point out is, well, I guess both of them in a way. You can see that we've, um, submitted the purchases, you can see purchases, 26, 382. That's because obviously things cost over a nuts money. We only put $25,000 in, but that's what it was worth. So that was the disabilities account. When you look at the I and B account, you can see that we purchased the $50,000 that we were supposed to, but then we also redeemed the $59,299, which was the cost of paving. You had already approved that in a previous board meeting. So Adriana was able to get all that paperwork over to Jean and get that whole process. So you can actually see that's already including the paving job. This is only going to change by a few thousand dollars for what you just most recently approved. I would say by the next statement, you'll see that in there.
So this is something to look at. Well, we started talking about Lauren articles.
Yep.
That's a little bit low.
Agreed.
You know?
Yep.
All right, um, the board will discuss a sabbatical request. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that we're really ready. From my understanding, we want to wait till the budget's presented.
Yes, because of the financial impact, we need to better understand our obligations.
The next thing says a brief update on the Alice Plan, and that was my mistake, I should have said on...
Excuse me, I just wanted to also add, we're also involved in contract negotiations, so we'll have a better understanding also of the increase to, that will be asked.
Absolutely. Um, the letter E says a brief update on the Alice Plan, and I should have actually changed that to saying on an emergency plan. So we do have a couple of options and we're starting to talk about those options and, and that's, you know, going to continue to be discussed. Um, so that's, that's really the update, is that we're at the very beginning stages of that. Um, next will be the volunteer flyers. Um, we had some volunteer flyers that we created for the volunteer experience, uh, that was last weekend. I can't thank Sue and others that talked about it. And Sue actually represented us at that, at that event, so we had those there. Uh, we do have the ability to continue to put volunteer flyers out in a variety of locations. You know, things I can think of is the post office may let us put something up on the bulletin board. We might be able to actually have some flyers themselves that can be taken at the town hall. Uh, you might have the library, there might be other places that you can think of. And we're just looking to see if that is a desire of the board and if so, then April, Adriana and I will work on getting it done.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes?
Put the word out there.
We know that, I think, Sue, there were, they have extras and Sue was going to take them and put them someplace else. But since the flyers have already been created, we can spread them around town.
You might have remembered where it was. Where was she gonna put those flyers?
She, well, she dropped them off and made suggestions to...
Oh, oh, it was suggestions of where they were gonna go, so, okay, so we do have that.
Oh, we do have, okay. And I just wanted to point out, this is, this came out of our public forum, that people were asking for more volunteers, um, to come to the building to make sure that people knew in the community different opportunities, volunteer opportunities that were available. So happened to be right before the volunteer fair, we made flyers, um, and now we're going to post them, so. There you go. Okay. The correspondence?
Oh, not the more, right?
No?
I didn't print that.
Okay. Community calendar?
Yep. It's due the 15th, so we don't have a meeting until then.
Okay, so you're good?
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out.
Okay.
I'll just reiterate that the school is now doing a community calendar as well and that Natalie was already able to submit this month's. And we'll look at, you know, getting different things in there, but it sounds like Jess helped out a lot as well.
Yeah. That's great. It looks good, it was perfect. Yeah. Good, good points. Okay, policy committee? Since Katrina isn't there, should we wait? And to the next meeting, are you good with waiting? It's really getting late.
I am.
She did approve the ones that are here, just so you know. The one that she changed her mind on, I withheld from the back.
Yeah, I don't know.
They were pretty boilerplate, but, uh, I'm good, I'm good with waiting for her.
All right.
Um, can we all, let me recheck real quick.
Okay.
Was there anything that was, you know, that we can deal with that?
Uh, the, the, on the last page is the handbook.
Oh, we should do the handbook, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 thank you. I was thinking there was one that I was like, I'm hoping we can get done tonight.
Yep.
So with this one, minor infractions, if you recall in a previous meeting, there was some significant concerns raised about the, the verbiage that was on that line. It was, seemed to be a little lightweight. Also seemed to be that it was implying that for even very minor things, uh, you could have, the, the lowest thing was like some sort of conference, I mean. So what I did was I went through and I reworded this, um, and put in a better, more beefy description into the beginning section there. And then how we respond, I really created kind of a progression. So the very first bullet on there, for example, says non-verbal cues, proximity redirection, brief private reminders. This is the kind of stuff that we were talking about in the meeting. Katrina and Eric did take a look at that, they did feel that that was solid language. And I think at this point, we're just hoping to get this passed so we can update the handbook and have this be known out there and clarified.
And Rob, I can't remember when you, just, does what's in the handbook now have examples? Cause you have it listed here as examples of how we sprung.
It's not, it's not, it, it are examples, but they, remember they were, the lowest one was having, I think it was a student-teacher conference. And that was the lightest weight one. So what we've done here is we've really tried to make it more category, well, categories, if you will. Immediate classroom, natural consequences, skill-building, communication, one-on-one, counseling, and peer mediation. So there's different categories now and there's a lot of stuff that fits into those that feel much more like level one-ish.
Okay, so, um, since we have to approve the handbook, we'd have to approve changes. So are people okay to...
Cross off, where in parentheses it says level two, question mark. I, I, I fixed it on the screen, but obviously I printed these before. I fixed it on the screen, so. I'm sorry about that.
Are, do people, are you ready to approve this?
I'm good.
Okay.
Um, so I move that we authorize the amendment to the student handbook as presented in the packet here with those, in the left column, with those level twos crossed out.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Great, you did a good, nice job really making this work clear.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yep. Kyle? Debbie, yes. Okay. I don't know, do you feel, Eric, it's up to you if you want to do the other things, if they were boilerplate and there was nothing that we, without Katrina here. What do you think?
Um...
Like one's about locations of AEDs.
Okay.
Yes.
One's about administering medication. All this has gone through Jamie.
Okay.
So one's about administering medication, the other one is the procedure for administering medication. So those three for sure are just, like, there wasn't much discussion because they're coming from other people.
All right, totally.
Those, those two, I was gonna say, those ones that went through the nurse, I'm good with.
Would you want to make a motion?
I, I move that we approve for first reading policies, uh, JLCD, administering medication to students. Policy KFD, use and location of automated external defibrillators. And policy JLCDR.
Okay.
Which is procedures.
Do we have a second? I'm, okay, discussion? So you said the nurse went through all of these and they seem to be...
Correct. On the one policy where you see the highlight, like Debbie's on that page, what page is that, right at the top right-hand corner?
On 41.
On page 41, you'll see some yellow highlight. That's just, um, a need that she's gonna have. If we pass this policy, we need to buy her a lockbox, um, for the refrigerator and a thermometer for the refrigerator. So we'll, we'll do that, it's just, that's not a big deal. It was just something that we wanted to make sure you understood. We will have to purchase a couple of items to meet that policy.
If, if Jamie, if this has gone through the policy committee and Jamie, I, I think I'm fine with it. I don't know if anybody else has questions? Good? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yep. Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
I remember it was just for first reading, so you can just see the guy next to the board meeting.
So, so the, the only other thing is just the volunteers? And do you think that one, we should wait for Ju- for Katrina?
I think, I think we should wait for her.
Okay. All right, let's wait. All right, so we'll just move that. Next, facilities. We met, yeah, we met earlier.
Yeah, we, we met, I think it was before our last meeting. Um, but there was one thing that we had to, um, discuss, which was, Rob had requested action on what we wanted to do about the heaters in the, um, gymnasium that are not working right now. And we had discussed that, me and Jess had discussed that at our, at that meeting we held. And our discussion revolved around thinking that that might be a good opportunity to go out to bid for that, for that project. And that would be coming from our IMB account.
Okay. Okay, and I think you're going to be getting something else from the wellness committees passing some facility stuff on to you too. Okay.
Rob, do you need a motion for us to?
I think I have to bring a bid back to you, so the next meeting will be, I'll bring a bid back, and then I think you guys have to approve that bid. And then after that, I can post it and advertise it.
Okay.
So that's the problem with bids, and the problem with putting your radar around the corner. It may not be fixed until December at this point, or whatever, so, but that's fine. That's not a big deal, I'm just letting you know that that's kind of the timeline. So at the next meeting, I'll bring back a proposed bid. I'll actually send it to you both in advance, so you can look through it. But then we'll do a proposed bid, and then at the next board meeting, you all yay or nay it. And if it's a yay, then I would get it advertised, push it out to any resources, the tri-state area, if you will, trying to find somebody or something.
Good? All righty, food service committee, no, we met last month. Education committee, I don't know, Katrina's on here. Wellness committee, we did meet today. And you're going to join in with this one, Rob, and Chris, oh, we did a lot of things. We have to do this review every three years, so it's a big deal to make sure we're following all the aspects of the wellness policy. Fortunately, we have a parent. A parent member who also works for another district, who has already done this. So she's going to be bringing all the information she uses, or their district uses, during our meeting, so hopefully we can do that. We heard, I did talk to Jeff to, the energy drinks, he hasn't seen any this year, so we talked about that. And we did look at the survey results, we unfortunately only had 11 responses, so, you know, not too much feedback.
And the parent has adjusted on that survey, that we run another one and align it to the wellness policy, so that each question is like a different section of the policy, so people can respond specifically about those things, which would then help us with our triennial review as well. It would help us inform if we need to make any changes.
Yes. And the other thing we, Rob brought, was this whole list of things that we needed to be looking at. A lot of it was around indoor air quality, and about, I don't know.
Sure, no problem. So, and newly in the spring, we have to fill out an indoor air quality document for the state of New Hampshire. And when I was doing, which is the first time I did it for this district, was last spring, because I was now the facilities manager, so I was filling that out. It asked a lot of questions of things that were like, well, not really, or I'm not sure, and things like that, so. But the very first question was, do you have a wellness policy? And so I was like, yes. And so our wellness committee, I think, was, do you have a wellness committee? I said, yes. So the rest of the, or the next questions that really seemed to align with wellness, and so I brought those today, so we could talk about it. Everything from idling vehicles in our parking laws, we shouldn't, we should have a clear policy about that, which we do. We say no idling, we have signs up, but talking about how we can hopefully spread that word to the community, so that they understand we shouldn't be idling while we're waiting for the kids, or waiting to drop kids off.
The chemicals, not using chemicals, not trading chemicals from home.
Furniture from home, there were several other areas. And then we jumped into some of the facilities kind of items, and so I'll bring those back to you. There's also some policy-related stuff, so I'll be bringing up the policy, I'll look at Eric, because he's both committees, so.
Yeah.
So there'll definitely be some stuff coming to other committees to talk about. Yeah.
I think one of the, the one thing for facilities is that we're interested in looking at having our ducks cleaned, because they have been. So we can't, I don't think we know when the last time was.
I can't find anything about our ducks ever being cleaned. I did talk to a couple of the vendors that we work with, and they were like, we don't do that, so it wouldn't have been us. So we're not aware of the ducks being cleaned, that doesn't mean that they weren't, I just don't know where else to look. But in this air quality, it does ask, have you cleaned them in the last one to, I think it was one to two years, or something like that? Three to five? Never, you know, like, there was different options, and I put down, I don't know, because I don't know.
So you're going to be seeing some of that, so you can see what you want to do. And also, then we need to look at two policies that we need about bringing the chemicals to school, and something else, I don't remember, but.
Furniture.
Furniture. Okay, I just thought we wanted to tackle that.
Once again, I'll bring it, just so you can see it, but the question was, is there any sort of guideline from an HBSBA about that? There was for the chemical one, but there, I don't believe there was for the furniture, so, but I'll look more into it.
Yeah, because they even wanted to, like, what kind of chemicals we're using in the building, you know, around, because it's like cleaning chemicals, things like that. Okay, transportation committee? All right, next, athletic committee, we did meet. We reviewed the applications for the winter coach and everything. And so Jeff is going to be contacting those people and getting that set up, which we would hopefully, by the next meeting, remove the names for approval. What else? We did talk about some things for the budget that we're going to put forward with, but Jeff is going to bring forward in the athletic budget this year. So there may be a little bit of an increase. For some reason, we underbudgeted for the cost of officials for games, so we're pretty low on that. We'll be sending out the end of the season surveys, the end of October. Basketball signups, I think we said we're going to start October 20th and do that to the 31st. So that they'll stay open for that period of time. We also discussed an idea that we had, I had a community member reach out to me about fundraising for athletic needs. And what we talked about, and this is, there's a couple pieces to this we need the board input. One, we're thinking about having an athletic booster club, where we'd have volunteers working to raise funds for maybe some things that, either specific items that we might need that we're not budgeting for, or just things that come up that we, it'd be nice to have, like, oh no, we really need this, and we didn't budget for it. But we wanted to make sure that the booster club would not be a Stratford School organization like we ran into with the PTO, to come up with a way to do that, where it's an independent group. And I didn't know if you guys, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say, and in the meeting I said, I'll ask Rob about that. So we wanted to see if we could form a booster club, if Rob can work out the details, to make sure that it's a, you know, something we can do. And then we did have one person who might be interested in coordinating the booster club. And if she wants to, we would talk to her about that. And if she wants to, we could talk to her about that. And then we would possibly have a blurb, once you approve, like, you know, how it could be set up, and the board's on board with it, and our coordinator's on board with it. We would then ask them to have this put in the newsletter, to ask parents who are interested in being volunteers in this booster club, to contact the coordinator. And this booster club would, would fundraise funds to defer costs and purchase items. They may also be involved in things like, whenever there is an end-of-the-season game, they usually do something for the graduating eighth graders. So that, you know, they would maybe coordinate something like that, maybe organize fun runs to raise money. So if the, if Rob finds that we can do this and make it an organization that's on target for the school, would the school board support having a booster club, athletic booster club?
I would. It's not associated with the school.
Well, okay, I think, can we have a motion that if Rob says it's, if he finds that legally where we can do it as?
Yes, so you want board endorsement, or just?
Only because I want them to be able to start. If they can do it, when's our next meeting?
Two weeks.
I guess we can wait the two weeks, all right, I guess we can wait the two weeks, okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll wait the two weeks for the answer. All right, you can all be thinking about it too, if you have any other questions. I know that they want to get started, because we have kids now that are in eighth grade leaving, and they want to be able to do, you know, have an organization do stuff for them. Okay. All right, so we finished the athletic committee, what else do we have?
School board association.
You did have something you wanted to bring up about, not the delegate, but correspondence from them.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we received an email from Bear Christina from the New Hampshire School Board Association, basically reaching out to Stratford, because we recently, within the last five years, formed our own SAU. They have some type of committee that is getting together to interview people who have been involved in changing from a large SAU to a smaller SAU. They were also, I think this may also be, I don't know if people correctly, if I'm wrong, sort of creating larger SAUs too?
Right, yeah. Basically, they're going through the research and hypothetically proposing larger SAUs and doing away with small, individual, single-district SAUs throughout the state. So they're trying to gather data and talking points to support that.
Right. So I don't know, I know they met today, and there's another meeting next Wednesday. I was contacted by the Nottingham Chair to ask if I was going to go, because we both, both boards and both districts left SAU 44 to create a smaller district. Is there anybody else who's interested in going to that?
I wasn't really involved in.
Why are you?
I thought it was like at 10 o'clock next Wednesday, maybe?
16. I don't know if I can get over to the door.
Um, you would be great, Eric, because you were also on that committee, you know?
Never really go from, like, if you're working by then.
I don't, I'm sure.
Oh, Eric and I are working.
They're there anyway.
We're just not going to.
Yeah.
Oh, you're a tropic control, just have to check.
Yeah. I mean, we had, compared to the experience that we had being in a larger SAU, there's no comparison. There's no comparison, it's so much better, as far as the attention we get, having our own superintendent, who is there just for us and just for our kids. And our own special ed director.
Yeah, those are two, so. The upcoming committee meetings are, well, the 15th is the next one in Concord, at 9:30 a.m.
Yep.
That's a Wednesday.
Right, and the other one was today, I think, right?
The other one was on the 6th.
Oh, the 6th, okay, yep. So I may go to the next one if I can. I don't know, Eric, if you want to go too?
I would like to, I don't know if I can mesh work that day.
All right.
I'll be interested to see what you got back with, because I'm curious how they're getting on local control and all the rest of that, so.
There's just no comparison.
It's just, it's just a, yeah. Just whole board association kind of thing, how they want to put together a proposal. It's no, not, no action yet.
I mean, just for example.
At least for the.
If we would ask for something, you know, request the superintendent do something for us, most likely by the next meeting, it wouldn't happen. I mean, Rob does everything that we ask him to do in a timely manner. He is totally focused on us, focused on our children. Melissa is just focused on our kids. And when we were in a multi-district SAU, we were the child, I like to look at it, that got the least attention. We really didn't, and although we paid a lot, we paid more than some. So we're not really paying any more than we did with the cost of living increases and everything else. And we're getting a lot more attention, and I think things are just much better, so.
If we were to go back to a larger SAU, shared, with shared resources, there's no way we could give up what we have here. We would just have to pile additional costs on top of that. There would be no savings, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, people don't, they don't have any understanding what it really was like. It's night and day, night and day. Okay, and the cost is not different, because we were paying a lot of money. Okay, dam committee, no, negotiation committee, oh, we did meet. We met last week, trying to think of, I don't know if we got the minutes yet, I think we did. We're to be meeting next week again, which the SCA will be bringing their proposal to us. And then, you know, we'll be able to take a look at that, and if we feel comfortable, we can temporarily TA something, which tentative agreement, which does not mean, it's not binding, because we're bringing it back to the board. If you say no, then it's the board that makes the decision. And we tried to clarify that, that we can't make, we know the general direction the board wants us to go, but specific things, we're probably going to bring back to the board. So it was good. And I think we're going to have our final proposals done, I feel like it was November 17th. That would be our final proposals. And then December 2nd, I think is another date that if we do not have an agreement, we go into the next steps of, I think it's mediation or whatever, yeah, so.
Was that our 13-hour date last time?
Yes, yes, 13-hour date.
Just tentative agreement, so, so you're going to get that tested, be a better.
Yes, well, I think it's like, we do it right after, we do it next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Has to be done.
It has to be done in a non-public.
Can we get a pre-read of that? Is that? That's what I don't know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I have to find that out.
Okay. I honestly don't know the answer to that, because everything's supposed to be done in a non-public, so it's not discoverable by a right.
Yeah, yeah, so, but we also, you know, we're not going, we're just going to give basic information during meetings. We both be signing to agreements that we wouldn't post on social media, any of those things, so. All righty, so, do we have any other other?
There was a facilities, you've got, what's the facilities?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Good job, Eric.
Thanks. We did get this after the fact. Adult pickleball, Stratford recreational sports, November 2nd to May 3rd, on Sundays, 9:15 a.m. to 12 p.m., using the gymnasium. So, yeah, and I have no objections to it. I think it's, it'll be fun, maybe I can stop by and see what pickleball's all about, so.
So.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move we approve adult pickleball, as sponsored by Stratford recreational sports, on Sunday afternoons, or Sunday mornings, 9:15 a.m. to 12 p.m., from November 2nd to May 3rd. And as always, no charge for the Stratford Rec sports, because they're a nonprofit and we partner with them a lot of things.
Great, do we have a second? Okay, discussion? Yeah, and it's an outreach for our community, so it's community groups, nonprofit, it's very good. Okay, Eric? Jess?
Yep.
Yes.
Kyle, Debbie, yes, okay. All right, so, public comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I see you want to do another.
Oh, we are going to have, before, we have our meetings coming up, they're right there. So we'll have that October 22nd, and that will be our budget pass. Then we'll have our next meeting at Co Brown, and you should do that right after following the Co Brown meeting. We go into a room and have a meeting, so. All righty, so we need to go into another non-public, and what should we, what is the?
Under the C.
Okay. All righty, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Appreciate you guys. See you around.
Okay.
Make sure you ask your kids to think of both, right?
They're about to vote, we might want to record the vote.
Oh, yes.
So.
Okay, we're going to?
I move we go into non-public at 8:10, under RSN 91, A32C.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll pick you.
And Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Thank you both so much. Thank you, thank you. See what you have, please, we would like to come to the committee.